The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, October 24th, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane?
Here. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Hanson in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential for the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the town and its citizens. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. One is prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and always helpful. At the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. One is during verbal communications period, when an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And second, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches and turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly so I don't mess it up. In addition to the service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Are there any reports tonight? I know there's one from Historic.
You're right.
Will you be presenting?
I will. Earlier today, we had a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee. We considered several items. 94 Hernandez Avenue was approved to go back to its original shingle siding from the current stucco. 52 Jackson Avenue was removed from the Historic Resources Inventory, as was 24 Filmer Avenue, removed from the inventory. And 47 Alpine was considered. We gave feedback on the proposal and have continued the item probably to the first half of December.
Thank you. On the other reports, seeing none. So we come to the verbal communications portion of our meetings. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda. For anyone who tends to unspeak, please come up just the microphone that you're speaking right into it, state your name and address for the record. In fairness to those who want to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any cards? Seeing none. We move then to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion, but before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the commission may request that an item be removed. Now, tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar, approval of the October 10, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the minutes. Do we have a request to pull the item or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Badami?
I move to approve the consent items, which consist of the approval of the minutes from October 10 of 2018.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Birch?
Seconded?
Pardon?
Seconded.
Second. Discussion. I'll call them, all those in favor? Passes unanimously, seven to zero. So we move to the public hearings portion of our meeting and consider item two, which is 16-100 Greenwich Terrace. What we have before us tonight is a plan development application, PD-16002, and environmental impact report, EIR-17001, requesting approval to rezone a property zoned HR2 and 1/2 to HR2 and 1/2 PD and to subdivide one lot into eight lots on property zoned HR2 and 1/2. It is APN 527-12-002. The property owner is Emerald Lake Investments, LLC. The applicant is Colsat and Associates, and the project planner is Jocelyn Shupman. Now, I believe we last had an EIR before us on June 8th, 2016, so I watched that hearing to see how we proceed with dealing with a draft EIR. Mr. Paulson, correct me if I get this wrong. This public hearing is not intended for consideration of the proposed project, nor for the actual certification of the draft EIR. This public hearing is intended solely to allow the public an opportunity to provide comments on the draft EIR. Staff will not be responding to comments on the draft received prior or during this public hearing. However, staff and the town's environmental consultant will respond to all written comments and to the testimony received tonight in the final EIR, which will include any revisions to the draft EIR necessitated by the comments received. Commissioners may ask a speaker for clarification of comments. A public hearing for the consideration of the final EIR and the project itself has not been scheduled. The Town Council is the deciding body for the proposed project. So I now open the public portion of the public hearing and invite comments from members of the public. And I invite Joyce Shen. Is Joyce here?
My name is Joyce Shen. I'm on 16090 Greenwich Terrace, and I oppose for having people go through our street because it's a small, narrow street. It's not able to go, two-way traffic. So... That's how I feel, and it's a private road.
The street you're referring to is Greenwich Terrace itself?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Drug? Did I get that right?
Yes, you did it just fine. Thank you. I live at 16080 Greenwich Terrace. I've lived there about nine years. My property butts upright against the 16-100 project, or proposed project, I should say. I reviewed the EIR. I noticed a couple of inconsistencies in the description of Blossom Hill Road. It details it as a four-lane highway, or four-lane road. It's not a four-lane road. It's a two-lane road when it meets up with Greenwich Terrace. And that Greenwich Terrace, it says Greenwich Terrace is a two-lane road. Actually, it's only a one-lane road, especially on the part where it goes to 16100. You can't, you can't fit two cars side by side very easily. You certainly can't fit a large truck and another car. There's also a pretty good hairpin turn there, which could be kind of like a hazard if there's too many cars going through. Another thing I am opposed is hiking trails. 16100 would have hiking trails behind it. We have a lot of homeless in the area. We have drug use. You know, people have gone hiking up on the high open space and had their dog frightened. We don't need that kind of activity, especially since we're a private road. We don't want people coming up our private road, parking on my private road, in my driveway. It's my road. It's not Larga Vista Avenue as detailed on the map. I own the land. I have to pay for it. I have to maintain it. So I don't know why Town of Los Gatos can say that the public can come and park there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You and the other speakers should feel free to submit these comments in writing if you wish, to enlarge upon them or whatever. Thank you. David Weissman?
Last April, 2017, the town advertised a scoping meeting, which was advertised to the general community. Specifically, it said that the purpose of this meeting was to advertise and solicit comments and suggestions regarding the preparation of the EIR, environmental issues to be addressed by the EIR, and any related issues from interested parties. The notice of preparation that the town put out continued that the purpose of this meeting was to solicit public comment on the scope of the environmental issues to be addressed in the EIR. It continued, "The Town of Los Gatos will incorporate relevant information into the draft EIR, including results of technical studies." So a number of people spoke at that meeting, and we expressed what we were requested to do. We gave you concerns, this and that. The problem is that the comment period for this draft EIR closes in five days. And all of those people that spoke back in April of 2017 have, are not here tonight. I don't know if any of them will reiterate the comments that they made in April, but the draft, but the comment period closes, and they may have made comments back in April, which may not have been properly transcribed and may not properly be answered in the final EIR. So we have a catch-22. How are you supposed to know that your comments will be included in the final EIR if, without that, without those questions being published? And I suggest what needs to be done in the next five days, if that five-day comment period is fixed, is that the questions from the previous meeting, the scoping meeting, be publicized somewhere so that if someone had a question or a concern, that we in fact know that that will be carried over and answered in the final EIR. It only seems fair to me.
Commissioner Hanson?
Dr. Weissman, was there any discussion at the end of that meeting about what was going to happen? Did they ever, was any minutes or anything like that published after?
That was a year and a half ago. I don't remember. I'm reading to you what the town published as the purpose of that meeting. And it certainly seemed that some of these issues would be addressed in the draft EIR. It says specifically, "The draft EIR," in the town's document. I've read this draft EIR, and I see nothing in there that was a concern of many of the residents who spoke at that April 2017 meeting. I mean, what was the purpose of even having that meeting?
I think you reiterated what you thought the purpose was. But, so my question was about the follow-up. So you're not aware that there was any specific follow-up telling you that, that this wasn't appropriate for the environmental analysis or it was addressed already or any of that? Not to your knowledge?
There's been no follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Thank you, and thank you for your letter. I actually had some questions about the letter that you sent for clarification. In point number five of your letter, you are suggesting two alternatives that, you're asking, why have they not been, why have two alternatives not been considered? And I just want to make sure I understand them. One is a four-lot subdivision alternative.
Uh huh.
And the other is to combine alternatives two and three, saving some more trees. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood those for the record also.
And the suggestion of an alternative, of alternative four with the four-lot subdivision instead of the eight, those, we didn't pull that out of our whatever. Those were, those came directly from the report that was commissioned by the previous owner in 2011, when they were looking at various ways to develop the property.
Okay. I had other questions, if I may. On point, let's see, seven toward the end, you talk about internal peer review, and maybe you could explain what you mean by internal peer review? And, you know, by whom and of what subject do you think that you're suggesting we take a look at?
Well, I would have thought that since this, these studies, the appendices, were done by outside consultants, that the internal peer review would be the town, town staff, doing just what I did to find these inconsistencies and errors.
Okay. So that would be a follow-up with staff that we may make. If I may, I have one, one last question. With regard to the visibility analysis methodology in point eight, are you suggesting that the modified visibility analysis is not being correctly followed in your comment?
I don't know if it's being followed correctly or not because the, the procedure that the, that was used to determine what is the visibility, what percentage of the house is screened, is not detailed. You write a scientific paper, you know this. You put in your materials and methods. You talk about what you did and how you did it and how you got to your results so someone can come back and evaluate and repeat them. They throw out a bunch of numbers. In some places, they're contradictory, but I don't have any idea whether or not they were done appropriately, specifically for the trees that were going to be, you know, that are planned to be removed, proposed to be removed by the construction. Are those trees then removed as screening trees? And if they are removed from the calculations, how is that done? With the simulations, with the, I know this can all be done on computers, but we need to see the evidence that they did it properly and not have to take their word for it.
Okay. So your concern, one of your concerns about the visibility analysis has to do with the screening trees and how that was taken into account?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weissman. Mr. Paulson, is it correct that October 29th, 2018 is the deadline for submitting written comments?
That's correct.
Thank you. Roman Ormando? Ormandi?
And the first name is Lak Polanski, but I have nothing to do with it. So I live on 16,200, direct neighbor of the 16,100 property. And there's a number of the elements of the proposal which I like, but I'm concerned like virtually every member of our community about the hiking trails. Number one concern, which I think everyone shares, is that we had in the past very unsavory elements, you know, having parties and up to the hill. And, you know, it could be even dangerous for, for our community if some people will just at night traveling. So that's one element which is of concern. But specifically, my other concern was that the lot number one and lot number eight are connected with this hiking trail, which right now is wide enough for semi-truck. It's a wide road. And I had an opportunity to talk with the architect of the proposal at the event they organized for us about a week ago, two weeks ago. He was very nice. He was trying to explain that he said, "Maybe they'll put some bushes there so it won't be so wide." And I requested some reassurance that this road, hiking trail, will not be connected through lot eight and lot one. Lot one has a very unusually large driveway, very large. Only the house was at the bottom of the lot, and now it's all the way on top. So if you connect it, and the end of the driveway goes directly to this 10, 20-foot, the trail, road. And so I told the architect that I would be very much more, could sleep at night much better if he could provide some assurance that there is no intention of kind of connecting the road there. And, and then the, the, basically, the Greenwich would become accessible from the other side. And today, I got an email from one of our neighbors, Phil, who also was concerned about some emergency access. So maybe, maybe, I don't know whether you can access it now. That is a consent I have, and, and it should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Fish?
Good evening. I am a lifelong member and owner on Greenwich Terrace through my family and my father, and now where I've raised my family. I too was very disappointed a year and a half ago because it appeared to be a good faith effort and a good faith opportunity to discuss with the staff concerns from not only Greenwich, but Francis Oaks and the Highlands, and all neighbors were invited. We assumed, and again, it was a good faith effort, that our concerns would be heard or at least registered. In this draft EIR, they are not. So for me, the draft EIR is equally disappointing. There are glaring errors. And when you look at the very first map and you see that they have labeled my neighbor's driveway as Largo Vista. And there is a street in town, in the town called Largo Vista, but it's over on the other side of the hill, over towards Blossom Hill Road. It has nothing to do with Greenwich Terrace or this property. The two-lane Greenwich Terrace, the four-lane Blossom Hill, all of those things are glaring. What are also important with this concern is the fact that there are omissions, huge omissions. We hear about faults in San Gregorio and, and San Andreas, but what about the fault in the property right next door? That's a vacant piece of property, which has held it up in terms of development and sale now for years. Nothing is mentioned about that fault. And at the community meeting, it was suggested the reason they now moved lot one homesite up higher to the hill is to stay away from that fault. But what it creates is an illegal and overly long cul-de-sac, which the hillside plan, specific plan, limits to 300, 350 feet. This is over 1,000. So the other omission is the years-long, lifelong court order for Greenwich Terrace. Since the 1970s, there's been a limitation on who could use that road because it was a private road. That's not here in the report. And that's huge because, again, it is something upon the foundation of which they're going to develop this property. They need to recognize and they need to include it into a document such as an EIR. So based on inconsistency, errors, and omissions, I believe they've reached what I believe are not substantiated conclusions, and part of which they say there's only this plan rearranging a couple of the lots, no plan or to open the easements. I guess that's my time, so.
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
So, you know, I'm saying that if we apply the hillside plan, certainly the spirit, if not the specifics, if we apply and put down what really is up there, you'd have to walk it. To me, this EIR is a compilation of cut and paste from others, cut and paste from the internet. Go up there and drive it. Go up there and drive it. You'll not write down that it's a two-lane street. You, you have to go there to see it. So I'm just saying they've reached unsubstantiated conclusions, of which four lots is certainly provable.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I did communicate with you in writing some of my concerns, that I was not able to hit all of them tonight, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Oh, you have five more days to submit something. Did you once serve the town as a planning commissioner?
I did.
And when, how far back was that?
In the 70s.
That's even before Commissioner O'Donnell.
That was back when it was recognized by the town council that we needed somebody who actually lived in the hills to help draft and put together a hillside plan, so that the very difficult pieces of parcel, or parcels of land, which back in the 70s were difficult, now in, in today's time are even more difficult because of all their problems, be taken care of in terms of meeting rules and regulations, so that we have a project or a planned development such as this.
Thank you very much.
That's worthy of the town.
Thank you. Romina Ahua, Ahuja, and Rob Abrams? Are you speaking separately?
Where is she?
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting us have a chance to speak. My name is Romina Ahuja, and I am the president of the HOA at the Highlands of Los Gatos, and I am speaking for most of our homeowners as well. We do agree with all the previous concerns, because we were there as well to discuss the EIR, and we have a few of our own that we just wanted to bring forward to you. We just hope that you can keep those in consideration again when you are passing this, this EIR. I'll try to make it very, very quick. We did send a letter out, Rob did send a letter out, so you should have that on record as well. Just a few of them, I'm just going to make very quick bullet points of it. It's basically, we live on Shady Lane, and we go up to Santala Court, and it's a single lane thoroughway. It's a single-lane road going all the way up. We are barely getting through our own construction right now, and from what we have heard from the builder and from Mr. Sahadi and everything, all of a sudden, we are going to be the thoroughway for both those constructions, be it Mr. Sahadi or be it the 1600 Green Ridge. And it's a single road. We don't have a pedestrian sidewalk, we have a lot of people walking through there with their dogs, hiking. It's not, it's, it hasn't been made for having long-time construction going on that road. With this development coming through, they're only selling the lots. They're not even selling the houses. So that means that if somebody decides that they're not building a home for the next five years, we, the Highlands of Los Gatos, are stuck, dealing with the construction coming up and down that street for the next probably 10 years, if not more, depending on how the constructions go. So that is a main concern for us. We are finding it extremely difficult already, because we do have a lot of walking traffic. The construction zone, we don't have enough room for the trucks to come through, and then cars to go through as well. The second will be the pedestrians, of course. We are going to be concerned that it's just not safe. The third will be making Shady Lane a thoroughway. When we moved into that neighborhood, we were more or less told that that was just going to be ending on Santala Court. Now with, oh, sorry, with.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. With that, now we are hearing that it's going to be a thoroughway for Shannon Road and Blossom Hill, for everybody to come through it. It's not prepared, it's not made for that. It's going to go completely downhill that way, because the construction trucks and everything are going to affect us. And thirdly, if you could keep it in mind, and could we request an extension on the passing of this EIR if possible, that would, that would help us all to kind of go back and look at our stuff.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for your time.
I have a question from Vice Chair Hootis.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm referring to the letter from Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
And I think you've addressed it to some degree, but I wanted to understand a little better. One of the concerns is the implications of Shady Lane becoming a thoroughfare.
Yes.
Is that primarily during construction, or is that the concern primarily after the construction is completed?
Well, it is, it is mainly for construction, but after that, the traffic is going to just become, because we're going to be opening ourselves, or we will be opened to having Mr. Sahadi's four, four properties on his, and I think they have eight. So that's going to be coming all through us, because this is going to be the, you're being thoroughway. So yes, it is a concern for us, for all of it.
Okay. And then another item, you mentioned that you had been told that it was not going to be a through street.
When we first.
By whom were you told?
Well, we, when we bought our homes at that time, it was a part of what was, I guess it was our builder, or whoever you may, whoever was kind of telling us about what the properties were going to be like. At that time, there was no talk about Shady Lane and Santala Way becoming a thoroughway.
Okay.
We were told that it was going to be a private neighborhood.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other cards on this matter? Then I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and move on to item three, which is 300 Marchmont Drive, conditional use permit application U-12-002. This is the annual review of an approved conditional use permit, I think which dates back to 2014.
2015, I think.
On property zone HR1. Conditional use permit for an existing private school, the Hillbrook School. It's APN 532-10-001 and 532-11-011. The applicant and property owner is Mark Silver in the Hillbrook School, and the project planner is Jocelyn Schupman, but tonight's report will be provided by Mr. Paulson. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the subject property? Are there any disclosures on this, on this matter? Seeing none. Mr. Paulson, would you give us a staff report, please?
Yeah. So as the chair mentioned, we're here for the annual review of Hillbrook's conditional use permit. It was reviewed last year, where the last group of additional students were permitted. And so over the past year, the traffic numbers have been calculated and posted on the town's website, as well as W. Trans performing three days in the spring and the fall semester, as required by the conditions of approval. Review of those numbers has shown that Hillbrook has not exceeded their maximum daily trips for regular days or special event days, and that concludes staff's report. We also have members of W. Trans here, if you have any additional questions of them. As the staff report states, staff recommends that you accept this report and find that Hillbrook School is in compliance with their conditional use permit, and then we will do this again next year.
The staff report was outstanding. My compliments to Ms. Schupman. But it did say that one of the three-day test periods was not performed. I didn't understand that.
So there's a requirement to have a sporting event. However, Hillbrook is doing, going to be doing construction, so they're not doing any sporting activities in the fall, so that's why that could not take place.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Jensen?
You mean?
Jensen, we don't have a Jensen. Commissioner Hanson, I thought you both wanted to talk.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm what Director Paulson said. They have completed the increase in allowable enrollment, so there, there is no more to be added, at least based on this, this CUP.
Pursuant to the maximum amount of students, they have authorization for the maximum? I don't think they're currently at the maximum.
Right. I saw that they're below the.
But they have authorization for that.
Yeah. There aren't any, any more tranches of, of enrollment to be added.
That's correct.
Based on the approved CUP.
Yeah, that's correct.
Commissioner Genoff, did your hand move? Did I? Any other questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant the opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. And who will be speaking with us this evening? Mark Silva and Chuck Hamers.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Kane, Commissioners. My name's Chuck Hamers. I live at 16230 Shannon Road, and I've been a resident for quite a while. I'm also chair of the board at Hillbrook School. We started this process almost seven years ago, and it was a process to do really one thing, expand the school, but it was to expand our middle school. And the reason was, our middle school was too small, and having a middle school with more kids gives more options for teenagers. As they get older, they get different interests. So my son Jude, is my last son to come through Hillbrook, is in the first tranche of the expanded group, which is now in seventh grade. And that tranche used to be in the high 30s, and now seventh grade here has 57 children, I believe. And I have to tell you how it has changed his life. They now have been able to add, every six, every six weeks, 10 different electives for them, and is creating so much opportunity for these kids, that he comes home so excited, and I don't know if you have teenagers, but he actually wants to talk about school. And it's great. And I see so much joy that's come out of this. So I just wanted to start off and say thank you to you guys for saying yes back then, and to the town council for saying yes, because not only has it added 70 more kids at the school, but it has added so much opportunity for the other 300 that are there at the same time. And I know you guys often get in the weeds with these things of traffic counts and EIRs, and then something gets completed, but you often don't hear the person come back with the new house that has a great Thanksgiving, or whatever it is. But I wanted to say, you guys have helped us create a lot of joy at that school, so thank you.
Hi. Mark Silver, I'm the head of school, also a resident of the town at 206 Brook Acres. And I would echo Chuck in thanking you. I'm a career middle school educator, and so when I came to Hillbrook, it was actually the first JK8 that I had worked at. I'd worked mostly in middle schools before. And the difference in our middle school today, from where it was four to five years ago, is palpable, and the energy and the excitement, and the quality of the program that we're able to offer is so much stronger because of your willingness to let us grow several years ago. I also want to add that we continue to take incredibly seriously the CUP and being compliant with the CUP. We're really proud of the way our community has risen up to meet the, it's a very challenging traffic model. I'm a, I'm a member of the board of Safe Routes to Schools, and we were at the meeting this morning, and I know that the town council, and I believe you probably beforehand, maybe were part of as well, the approval of the bus program, which we're very, you know, very excited about at a town level. Running those programs is complicated. As a school, we are really proud of the incredible percentage of our students who are on those shuttles every day, the number of students, my own children, we live on 206 Brook Acres Drive, my own children bike or walk to school every day now. It's really changed the culture of the school in terms of how we get to and from, from school, and I think has had a really positive impact on the neighborhood. So again, we are very grateful that we are here today and that this room is basically empty, and not full of, of neighbors who are, who are, you know, deeply concerned about the relationship that we have with the school, and so we appreciate the trust that you showed in us several years ago, and I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hanson. I got it right.
I, I did want to say, I, I see the bus every day, because I drive, I live off of Shannon Road as, as well, and so I drive by it every day, and I think that's great that you guys are doing that, and that you're involved in Safe Routes to School. My question is this, I mean, it appears you're definitely in compliance with the terms of the CUP, but the thing is, you're not currently at the maximum enrollment that you could possibly have. So my question for you is this. I counted 12 days in the tables that we had where the counts were over 800, and a couple days where it was within 10, you know, 10 or 15 of 880. And so I'm just curious how, how you're going to manage that, were you to actually go up to the, the maximum is 414, I think?
Yeah, the maximum's 40.
And that's 30 more, 30 more. So how, you know, you have the TDM program in, and I know you're encouraging everybody, so, you know, just fill us in on how you would, how you would manage if, if you did go up the other 30 and not end up some, having some days where you go over to the 880.
Yeah, great. It's a good question. So essentially, what we've discovered is, you know, it's really arrival and departure. And it's surprising, so as you've, as we've grown from 315 to 383, you'll actually see, right, that our traffic hasn't really increased. And in fact, this year, it's, it's a little bit lower, and in fairness, because of construction, not for any other reason, we don't have any athletic contests this fall, and so that certainly helps. Like, things like after-school sports are, are one of the bigger complicating factors for us as we're trying to manage traffic. But so, you know, for the most part, we feel pretty comfortable, and we are incredibly vigilant. And so Joe Conley, who is here tonight, who oversees along with his team, is Nicole Kabaralak, who's our director of transportation management, they spend, in the summer, they look at every single day, and then every single week, they're looking back at every single day, and we're tracking everything from parent meetings to, you know, after-school activities, you know, the two visitors to the school for this, that, or the other. So we're just very vigilant about those different things. And again, I think, you know, the big factor, right, is that we know we can control most of it through busing, carpooling, shuttling in the mornings and the, and the afternoons, but we're always aware of kind of some of those wild cards. We feel confident that we can continue to grow. I think, you know, hopefully next year, we're hoping to be around 390, 400. We don't necessarily know that we'll grow that much higher than that. Again, obviously, the 414, hopefully will give us a little bit of cushion with, with our enrollment numbers, but we'll see. But, but, but so far, so good. And again, we're, I know Joe spends a lot of time and angst trying to make sure that we manage the traffic.
Thank you for your answer.
Vice Chair Hootis.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Our job here is to review the report, the annual review of the report relative to the CUP, and this is a complicated solution to a difficult problem, and there are a lot of moving parts to it, and the report has lots of numbers in it, and I tend to look at a lot of numbers, but I also wanted to sort of ask you sort of a qualitative question about the report. Since you've been associated with the school for some time, how would you characterize this year in terms of interactions with the neighborhood regarding traffic and the concerns that were there several years ago? Could you sort of describe sort of this year's set of comments and interactions with the neighborhood?
It's been very positive so far. I mean, there have been, you know, there's always a handful of, of concerns that come to us around, you know, various things in the neighborhood. Occasionally, somebody points out that, you know, that somebody parks in the neighborhood, and we try to be very vigilant about making sure that people are not parking in the neighborhood. Trying to think about it. There haven't been many, actually, this year, and, and again, so one of the places that I've been pretty involved is Safe Routes, and I actually run into a lot of our neighbors through being involved with Safe Routes, and the difference between those, not necessarily the relationships, but the difference between the interactions that we're having now and four or five years ago, you know, there's just, there's not the tension, and I think, I also think that not just me, but the fact that Hillbrook is so involved with Safe Routes and with other, you know, organizations in the town, that they, and they recognize that it's not just lip service, and that we really are serious about trying to manage traffic, not just for Hillbrook, but for other schools. So my sense is it's positive.
Thank you.
I have a question. We've had this hearing in 2015, 2016, 2017, and now in 2018, and in this report, you've got seven pages of bus routes, and that's very impressive. I don't remember seeing them before. Are these new routes? Are you, are you using more buses?
We do have, we have four buses now, so there are, there are additional buses. And every year, we've always changed routes slightly, just depending on where students are living, and our director of transportation, who works for Joe, is really good at being very flexible in terms of trying to manage routes based on where, what the needs are. But yes, we have added buses.
Let me ask, how's the safety record?
Perfect. I mean, we've had no, we've had no issues since.
For the buses?
Yeah, there've been no issues.
For the parents dropping off on those streets, up and down?
There have been no issues since.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to look to the public for other comments. I have no cards. Seeing no comments, you now have five minutes to rebut anything you just heard. You pass? All right. I'll close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to my commissioners for comment, questions of staff, or a motion. Commissioner Badami.
I'm comfortable with the report and the progress that's been made to manage traffic in the Hillbrook neighborhood, and the fact that we don't have anybody rebutting what you're saying, speaks volumes, because it's been a very vocal neighborhood. So you may have been thanking us, but we thank you for all the efforts that you've done. So with that. So with that, I'd be ready to make a motion to accept the annual report for conditional use permit application U-12-002, the annual review of an approved conditional use permit for an existing private school on property zoned HR1. I can make the required findings for SEQA and the required findings for compliance with the conditional use permit per exhibit two.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I will, I will second the motion, and I also would like to add my appreciation of the efforts that have been made between the community and the school. Having been here a few years ago, it was quite a contentious relationship. And knowing a few people that live in the area, I am very pleased with the efforts that have been made in the relationship as it stands now.
No, you're right. I remember those hearings. The room was full. Room's empty tonight. Other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on this item?
There are not. You're just accepting the annual report, and then we will have the same information at next year so that we can keep complying with the requirements of their conditional use permit.
All right. Good job. Thank you. We move to other business, item four on the agenda, report from the director of community development. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us tonight?
Thank you. Just a few items. Last week, the council on Tuesday considered the proposed fence ordinance amendments. And so that was ultimately sent back to the town council policy committee for some further discussion. That meeting will be taking place on November 15. There was also a community workshop, which Ms. Hanson attended last Wednesday, which was the community workshop for the general plan update. And then there will also be the first general plan advisory committee meeting, which is coming up on October 30. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is, there's a number of openings on a number of boards and commissions and committees in the town, so if you have folks that may be interested in some of those opportunities, please direct them to the town's website. Those applications are due this Friday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Paulson. Is it true that we in the future shall have one meeting in November and one meeting in December?
Historically, we have had one meeting in November and one meeting in December.
And town council has two meetings in November and two meetings in December. Is that true?
That is correct.
We win. Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.